Yeah, let's go ahead and start. Sure. So should we um all stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to which the republic to which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Alright, um. So we have one item on the agenda today, which is uh the old Greenwich um. School, we have some uh updates to the ed specs. And I'm going to to make this call uh more efficient for everyone on this Thursday evening. Is to turn this over to Mike, who is our liaison for the board to the old Greenwich um building committee. And have him run this meeting. So Mike, uh the floor is yours.
Uh thank, thank you, Madam Chairman. So the first thing I'd like to make a motion. Um to get us started to accept the revised old Greenwich ed specs as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, alright, so let's um so, good evening, everybody. So I'm very excited, um and really honored um to be able to introduce. Uh members of of the old Greenwich Building Committee um to present to you um. We'll read not, not, not necessarily the revised ed specs, but really the project to this point. Um, this project has been uh fully vetted. Um, the value engineered um and is very much ready to go. Um, it is on budget. And really represents a broad consensus of not only the old Greenwich community, but really. Um, I think um just about everybody who's been following this process about what um. What about how best to meet the needs of this school. Uh for the next hundred years of its existence, the um it's really been, it's been really remarkable, the old, I am happy to say. The old Greenwich Building Committee, the colleagues here will say, I will not tread along long, because the other thing I can say with. Um, a lot of certainty is I've had little to do with this. This has been very much the work of the um, the others on the committee. Um, and the chair and our building professionals, and they deserve the lion's share of credit. The amount of hours that have gone on to this is um. Truly remarkable, and that's why you have really what I think is a really exciting project that um I could not be more enthusiastic about. Um, you're going to hear a couple about a couple of things tonight. Um, the first thing on our agenda that we have to talk through is the ed specs and. Uh James is going to talk a little bit about why we needed to do some tweaks and revisions to the ed specs. Uh, and then we're going to talk about the construction estimate. Um, the most important thing to remember about the cost estimate, uh when to remind everybody is we budgeted. Um, in the fall, we budgeted a figure for the old Greenwich Building Com- for the old Greenwich project. Um, and we hit, we pretty much hit that number. Um, we have a couple of options that we're going to talk, talk through. Um, that we're going to add a little, that might add a little bit to that number, but the actual number that we budgeted to the um, we, we've hit. Um, and I think that's really important um to understand here right off the beginning here, that we're, we're on budget and very much ready to go. Um, with that said, I'm going to turn this over to the Chair of the Old Greenwich Building Committee, James Waters, um who's going to talk through and. The ed specs um a little bit.
Thank, thank you, Mike, and, and thank you um, all of you for, for doing this and for scheduling a special meeting. We had, we had wanted to get to you a little bit sooner, uh but, you know, one thing I think uh. I can assure you is that this building committee doesn't uh looks, looks under every stone, right, and. Uh, w- we have spent the last six weeks working on this estimate, uh you know, at a long time after. Uh, we had gotten the design done, so I'm going to jump right into it, if that's okay. Um, I will introduce really quickly some, just make sure you know who is who is. Um, Jackie Welsh is, is on, is raised as a panelist there, she is our vice chair. You should know that she is our design guru. Um, she has led this, helped lead this design process, value engineering. A lot of these ideas wouldn't have happened without her. Um, second is, we've got David Petroselli, uh, uh David Stein from Silver Petroselli, oh my goodness, uh. And um, you got, he's a familiar uh face to you guys from the other projects, I'm sure. Uh, we have Jeff Anderson from Downs Construction, Ryan Patrick from Downs Construction, are they are our construction manager. At Risk. And then uh, I don't think uh Mike Antonacci has yet raised Lawrence Rosati, who's our owner's rep, but he is, he is uh on as well and. Um, uh, it, the reason I wanted to say that is, one of the strengths, and you may have heard me say this before. Of this is, is this team, right? This is a team, this operates as a team, we challenge each other. And, you know, w- we, we all have different perspectives, but everybody sort of has really been working together. I can't give them enough credit because this, I, I, we might have a very different story if it weren't for this team. So with that, I'm going to jump right into a presentation that I would like to share. That I think helps frame some of the materials that you guys received or were posted last night. And um, I'm going to start with, can you, we see that presentation? Okay, so um, you can see the same picture behind me right now. But this is, you know, you guys would know what old grade school looks like. Um, and I'm just going to start driving on this presentation now, so. Um, look, we are near the end of the design development phase of the pre-construction process. I think you've all seen and heard and know that this project has really strong support from the community parents. Um, board, this board has certainly been extremely supportive, P and Z, the RTM, you guys, I, I don't know if you, you're heavy RTM watchers. But the RTM approved our MI one hundred and twenty-six to four. Right, so this was, this was a, you know, this project, I always have RTM members, you, you know, I'm the Chair of the RTM. Uh, Budget Overview Committee, and I have people coming up and asking me about this project all the time. Um, we now have uh approval from the US Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights for this project. That we did not, we've not, uh, we have notified you before, but we've not been able to tell you that publicly, that came on October thirtieth. They have approved our project design, saying that it does comply with the twenty-ten ADA standards. And they have approved our project schedule, which requires a twenty-twenty-five start. So let's, let's talk more recent, uh, March twelfth, this Tuesday, the, the building committee voted unanimously eight-zero. Uh, to approve modifications to the OGS ad specs, obviously, those are just to, those are your jurisdiction, but we support it. Um, and second to um, uh, accept an updated project estimate by Downs. Um, I think you all know, we need construction funding approval from the Board of Ed, the BET and the RTM to meet the state's June thirty deadline. So that we can get on the twenty-twenty-five priority list. If we don't, the project will be delayed another year. I can tell you today, construction is on track to start in the summer of twenty-twenty-five. We had hoped last year to be able to start this coming summer. Unfortunately, um, without construction funding, that is no longer possible. And I think I communicated that to you on October fifth, when I saw you. I know I communicated it to the BET on October sixteenth. When I saw them, um, and, you know, we would love to have been in a position to start this summer, but it's, it's summer twenty-twenty-five. You all know, some of, I know there's a couple new Board of Ed members, um. You know, this is really a culmination of a multi-year effort that started in twenty-eighteen. You know, uh. When, when this project was deemed a high priority renovation, and I know, um, you know, Chairman uh Kowalski uh led the feasibility. Committee and, and we're certainly appreciative for that, and so. Um, and then, look, there's still work to go on pre-construction. We've got funding approvals, we've got final site plan approval with P and Z. Our phasing plan to complete, construction documents. Um, state approvals, building permit approvals, bidding and awards, there's, there's plenty of, of work to be done before we can break ground. Um, the good news is, we're not starting from scratch on any of those things right now. Okay, so let's talk, I'm going to turn this over to David Stein from Silver Petroselli. Who's going to walk through the ed spec modifications um that we are recommending uh to you, uh, David.
Yeah, thank you, James, and um, good evening, everyone, good to see some faces again. Um, so, as you know, the ed spec is really your, your mission statement. And the ed specs are often crafted and written and endorsed at a time before any line is drawn on paper. Um, they are done in tandem with feasibility studies such as yours, that was done through your feasibility committee. But then you sort of fast forward to a time that typically happens here at design development, when we've had months of work, we've been on the project for. Almost a year, um, and we've been able to discover items that we felt needed to be realigned. Uh, and sort of retooled as this educational spec is part of the application that would go in on that June thirtieth deadline. And the purpose of the educational spec is a narrative, a detailed narrative that provides to the state. What the mission of the project is as it relates to your state reimbursement. So with that, we want to be very specific that we're hitting your educational goals, because this is an educational spec. But we also want to be specific to the bricks and mortar that go into this building, so it determines sort of the scale. Um, it articulates the alterations that are going to be had as part of the project. And we reference the timeline. As part of your project, this is a multi-task project. We are tackling many alteration elements to the age of this building. So these modifications are doing a few things as we've outlined here. We wanted to delete or remove any language that was, that was too specific. That was noted in the feasibility study, that's no longer applicable here, and that is common, I want to point out, that it is very common. That you get to a point, you modify your educational specs. Um, and you do that prior to your application component, so I want to sort of point that, point that out. We actually modified the Greenwich High School ed specs as part of the project that we worked with you on um last year. Um, so the first bullet that we did again was to really just delete any items or language. That was not appropriate to the programming elements as the current plan that we submitted during our schematic design. We've also updated those program language, because there was items that were very specific to that feasibility in terms of positioning. And location of those spaces, because our plan changed that, right? We retooled the entryway and with that changed sort of the organizational structure of some of those. What we also wanted to do is, is, is really codify the main mission of this project. Which was the ADA improvements, which James mentioned, related to the OCR um approval. And we also wanted to deal with the school uh safety requirements and make sure that that language in there is crystal clear. To the message of the overall project. We needed to then fast forward to the budget, because that referenced the work that was done as part of the feasibility. We now have a budget in place that we can reference, along with our timeline, and then we simply replaced. Um, the uh current plans and remove the old plans and any of those references to those documents in here. To avoid any confusion or overlap when this is audited as part of the reimbursement component of the state. And then lastly, it just gave us an opportunity to fix any minor typos or uh grammatical errors or even just. Formatting of this. I want to point out that you'll still note. That the original ed spec still shows the author that was there, and we revised this, dated that uh March the twelfth. But we kept really the overall structure in place, so these are edits and adjustments. This is not a, a, a full retooling and rewritten of those ed specs. And I believe you do have a copy in two formats, which show the final reiteration. But then one that shows all of the uh edits that were taking place in the right portion of the column, and that was emailed. To you, so that's really a summary of, of what we did with the educational specs.
Great, thank you, David. Let's keep going, if that's okay, unless anyone wants to pause us for any reason. Okay. Excuse me. There we go. So now, I'd like to, we're going to transition a little bit to our project estimate. Um, and I'd like to turn it over to uh the combination of Jeff Anderson. Uh, and Ryan Patrick to walk through some of the work that they did on our project estimate.
Thanks, James, uh Jeff Anderson, uh good to see uh some of you again, good to meet those new members of the board. Uh, first and foremost, before we dive into what's on the screen, I just want to reiterate. And really review to some extent, some of the comments made this evening. So first and foremost, you know, this is a design development. Budget estimate or the fifty percent completion point in the drawings and specifications from layman's perspective. It's important to note that this is not just a Downs Construction opinion of cost. But an opinion of cost cooperated and reconciled by a qualified third-party estimator in PM and C. Uh, who does these type of school estimates, day in and day out through the state of Connecticut, so. Today's presentation again is really a result of a truly collaborative effort from the entire team, but not just Downs. Your architect SPA, their consultants, or just Morganti. Uh, it's really also your building committee, the industry knowledge base at the building committee level that you have is really unprecedented, in my opinion. Uh, and experience in doing these types of projects for almost twenty-six years now. So it's something the old Greenwich community should really be proud of, so. You're the Board of Ed, of course, other approving bodies within Greenwich that are still to come, hopefully following this evening, and as important. Uh, the residents of Greenwich to feel confident that we put forth a project that maximizes the program while minimizing cost. And ensuring a uh quality learning environment for the students at Old Greenwich for years to come. So with that said. I'll move right on to the estimate. So this first slide that we have here. Is an overall summary, trying to bring together the effort that we did at the schematic design stage last year. Uh, which is the first column of numbers on the left side of the page. Uh, that is putting together what we had presented to you and then subsequently to the BET at about forty-one million. Um, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. Now, at that time, we had uh reported that if the job was not approved. You would be uh realizing uh additional escalation to postpone the project. Uh, another year, so we, at that time, we were predicting about two-point-nine million of additional escalation, bringing the total project cost. Uh, to about forty-four and nine. Uh, the projected state reimbursement at that time for Greenwich was about six-point-nine million, leaving a net cost. Of about thirty-seven-nine, and then across the bottom is a listing of what the fun, additional funding requirements would be. Beyond what's already been approved, of course, which is the AE funding at about two-point-one million. So now, um, a big part of our effort over the last six weeks plus, as James had highlighted, is really. Not going through every detail that we can on this design development set of drawings. To ensure, again, no stone was left unturned, and that we were providing options. To Old Greenwich in its entirety, Greenwich, the Board of Ed, so that decisions can be made. And options can be discussed on what is best for that school, those students, and of course, that staff. So the effort of the DD estimate, which is the three columns here, uh, on the right side of this uh slide. Uh, culminate really in this light green column, the recommended column from. All of that effort I just described, recommended by your building committee. On what um is the best approach if, if um the money uh is, is, is approved to move forward with this. This area of scope, so that scope in the recommended column is about forty-six-point-three in the first red box. Um, the difference between this and the SD estimate from last year, including that escalation, is about one-point-five million. The projected state reimbursement, about seven-point-two. Uh, project net cost to town, thirty-nine-one. The difference uh for town responsibility is about one-point-three. Now, because of where we sat with this project after we had uh substantially completed the DD estimate. It is normal standard operating procedure for us to get into cost management, so. This, the, the column second uh, uh from right is our cost management column. So another option, again, uh we'll talk about in detail on what makes up recommended versus cost management and full scope in an upcoming slide. But what this does, it brings the project back closer uh to what was anticipated again at the SD level. Only being about seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand over that previous estimate that included escalation. Again, projected state re- reimbursement of about seven, net cost to town about thirty-eight-five. Total difference really to the town, about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And then the final column, all the way to the right, is really the full scope, really almost nearly a full alter- alteration, and we'll talk about. Some of the significant full scope items that are included in that. I won't read all those numbers, but of course, you can see. That would be about six-point-five million over from the last SD estimate. Uh, and really starts to bring in a lot of things that may be desirable uh for the community to approve. So with that, um, we may go back and forth a little bit on these slides, we've really worked hard to try to. Simplify this to the extent that we could, but also, of course, make sure that the information was in front of you this evening, so you can make an educated decision. So again, with that, I think we go to the next slide, James. And I'll turn this over to Ryan. Ryan Patrick is our estimating manager. He's really the one that is responsible for the analysis on our side of the table over the last six weeks. Uh, working closely, of course, with James and the rest of the committee, uh, to come up with um the solutions and the options that we're presenting this evening. So Ryan.
Thank you, um, good evening, everyone. So the purpose of this next slide is to uh bridge. Between and focus mostly on the recommended option and understand what the added costs were. And how we utilize some, some cost management savings to keep it under control and get. To that one-point-five number. The left side, the left column, represents those added costs. And the right side represents the cost management um that we had gone through. So as you can see, starting with the increase at one-point uh five million. Below that, we have a few highlighted items that we'd like to uh talk about. As significant added costs to the job. Which were the playground uh equipment and the surfacing. Um, back in the SD, we had removed it from the project in hopes that there was um a way to pay for it outside of the project. Um, but obviously, being back in the project, it has caused a significant increase. Through all of our, our efforts down um onsite, testing and um forensic investigations. Um, it has become clear that, that uh hiring an onsite hygienist. Would ensure the safety of the students, and so that's the second item, which is about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The third item is the lighting fixtures. Initially, we, we were informed that a recent um lighting fixture replacement had taken place. And that the fixtures were LED. Um, we later learned that that is not the case. Um, and we will in fact have to replace or retrofit um a significant amount of the uh light fixtures. Um, which ultimately led to a significant increase as well. The fourth item is um an increase in the roofing scope, which. Which was caused by um the actual rooftop units needing, needing a home. And we had not anticipated actually uh replacing the Area A roof, which is above the gym. And music classroom. Those items combined actually equal that one-point-five million overage. The remaining items below, we were able to offset through the column on the right, which is. Cost management, which is included in the recommended option. Next, we'll start looking at the different options and the differences between them, but. This is a breakdown essentially of what's included or what was um removed as far as cost management goes. For the recommended option.
And, and, thanks, Ryan, and, and before we just quickly uh go, go to the next slide, I just want to say, look, this is, this. This, all these numbers and, and words on the page here, this was a lot of real work, right? This was, you know, only, um, we were only able to find three-point-eight million dollars of savings. Because people like, you know, Jackie and, and Leander and Jen Bensabango, and not to mention, of course, our professionals. You know, were able to sort of, you know, really dive in and say, do we really need this? Is there a better way to do that? And, you know, uh, a, a great example is one, maybe, Ryan, you should just, before we go into the next page, is why don't you tell them about. You know, the, the example on the stairs, right? Just, just something simple, just, I, I think it helps the, the, the gym stairs. Just explain that to, to them, what the decision we made less than a week ago.
So the, the stairs were um, a- as, as far as the code uh requirements, we, we did need to. Uh, build a ramp, so. As a means to save money, we were talking about not rebuilding the stairs. But they're obviously in a condition that um, that could definitely use the repair. Um, however, the design team actually came up with a, an alternative design. Uh, using cast-in-place concrete instead of the pre-cast, or resetting the steps themselves. Um, to actually build a new stair and cast in place concrete and still save a significant amount of money doing so.
Yeah, so, you know, i- it's literally, tha- that's actually a little, a smaller example, but there are. Tons of those examples on this page and others that, you know, are, are, we didn't highlight here, so, um, let's keep going though. Okay, Ryan, go, go for it.
So the next, uh, this next page um. Is, is an overview of um not only just the SD estimate that we had previously done. Um, so you can compare what was included in that estimate against each of the three options that we're presenting tonight. Um, the highlighted column in green is the recommended, and that's uh what we were just discussing. The column next to it is a cost management column that Jeff had previously spoken to. And last is the full scope. Um, which includes some, some larger uh costly items, but um. Would certainly, everybody would love to see in the project if possible. So. First, you have the um total project cost with escalation and a comparison of each of the estimates and options. And showing the, again, the overages of one-point-five million. The cost management option of seven, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, and the full scope option of six-point-five million. Um, below that is again the, the projected state reimbursement. And below that would be the um, project net cost to the town. Um, and the difference from the previous estimate. Below that, yep.
Sorry, Brian, I was just, ju- just, maybe you just focus a, a, a little bit on the. Um, the scope items, we tried to create this in such a way so that you can, you know, we could have thrown a bunch of numbers on this page. you know, we could have thrown a bunch of numbers on this page, but we basically wanted you to be able to say, see in a simple way, hopefully you can, you're able to to do that, you know, okay, playground's in this option, it's not in that option. You know, it is on the other, right? So the I hope that's self-explanatory, but Ryan, would you highlight any of the big ones?
Sure. So so the objective was, yes, to to be able to show everybody exactly what was in each of these options and highlight the major points. The, obviously, the playground replacement, starting in the recommended column, would be a significant increase from the previous SD estimate, along with the hygienist, which we spoke about, and the lighting fixtures and the roof as well. One that we didn't talk about was the bathroom. Now, this would be to not renovate three of the bathrooms. However, those three bathrooms don't, aren't required to be renovated by code, with the exception of a door that does need to be widened. Aside from that scope of work, which is included, this would not be related to code. However, we were already doing significant renovations in that area. And therefore, it made sense that if we could do it, it should be included in the job. However, as a as a means to provide a cost management option, we have removed it in the cost management column. Right below that, you have the IT wireless access points. And it says in the cost management column, partially excluded. What we've done here is we've reduced the new wireless access points, not necessarily the the total wireless access points. We just won't be replacing ten of the devices, and that's what the savings were. The security cameras, we had made a reduction in total security cameras. And that gets reduced from, starting at the recommended, we went down slightly in the cost management and up again in the full scope. All the items below the line pertain to the full scope. So this would be the full package, and they have a few large items in here. I'd I'd highlight the full roof replacement, the full window replacement, the full millwork replacement, and also the flooring for every classroom. This would essentially touch every part of that building. And that is, I guess, the overview and the major differences between each of these packages.
Yeah, Ryan, the the Ryan, the the one only thing I would just add for the board's benefit here is, you know, but the the items below the line are some have some big costs, right? You know, the full roof replacement, a full window replacement. This board will have to do those things eventually for this building, just like you would for any building. They have the these specific, those specific items I mentioned have never been part of the ed spec for OGS. We're not proposing that they be become part of the project for OGS, but we are, you know, wanting to make sure that you have full awareness. Because, you know, this is, you know, you're you do have some roof systems that are are in okay shape right now. They're they're just fine. Otherwise, we would be recommending that. But you, you know, they're not going to go away, right? And they will need a normal refresh cycle and going forward. And and I'll just, before we move to the next slide, the building committee, you know, I went around and asked every individual member of the building committee on Tuesday, do you have any changes from the recommended scope? The answer I got to that to that question from every single member was no. So the building committee supports this middle column that that that's in in the estimate. So just want to make sure that's clear. Okay, I'm going to actually take this one and then ask for help from David, Jeff, Ryan, where we need it. This slide gets into the the middle column, the cost management option. And we're going to just dive into four items that are really included or excluded from that option. And, you know, a way that if this board wanted to, could save seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the project. There are some pros and cons, and I want to make sure everybody here is eyes wide open on what those pros and cons are. So the first one is the big one. It's the playground replacement. So the ed spec has always called for the playground to be relocated. We've done a bunch of diligence on that over the last six months. And the bottom line is to relocate the playground will be the same cost as buying a new playground. And ours, I think the building committee's view is we should just, we need to just replace this playground. It is on the Board of Ed's capital plan. I believe it's FY twenty-seven or twenty-eight. I know Dr. Jones could correct me on that. The other point I would highlight is that the playground needs to get done early in the project. So this will be literally one of the first elements of the project to get done because the first phase, as we start construction, is going to be building the new addition. And the, guess what? The current playground is right in where the the new addition needs to go. So we can't have, the building committee's view is, we can't not have a playground at Old Greenwich School for a period of time, so we're going to need to get that done early. So we have moved, you know, we we have added that to the project because of all those moving dynamics. But if this board wanted to, you know, reduce the the cost of the estimate, it could be removed. It would remove five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the project estimate. It could be funded separately by the Board of Ed. If you did that, it would forego, you would be foregoing an estimated eighty thousand dollars of reimbursement from the state. And there would be a timing risk because OGS needs the playground. So, second, let's talk about those the those bathrooms, the three bathrooms. There's a little bit of an ADA concern about the interior doors. The basic rationale to do it is you're working on adjacent rooms. That's a good time to do it. We might as well, they could use a refresh. Taking it out of the project would save you a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and perhaps we could do a more minimal refresh. Again, you see the reimbursement there is twenty-seven thousand. Let's, you know, I you kind of get the drill on the rest of these wireless access points. It's a potential savings of twenty K. Our view is, we're taking the ceilings down during this project. You're going to be, you know, if you're taking the ceilings down and redoing the cabling, you know, you might as well put in new equipment. Some of these wireless access points are near the end of their useful life. And and look, if we cut this from, if this were cut from the project, we would still need to figure out, all right, some of these are going to need to get replaced when we take the ceiling down. So we have, we have to sort of do a little bit of guesswork. This, whereas in the recommended scope, that all of those wireless access points are being replaced. And then the final thing are the security camera recommendations. We have had great dialogue, I would say, with the new Director of School Safety. He's been fantastic, given us some good recs. He has included some wish list items. But we could reduce some of his items requested. It would save about thirty thousand dollars. It could be funded and probably would need to be funded separately by the Board of Ed. And, you know, our thought is, you know what, let's let's do what the man request is recommending. And that's what we included in our recommended scope. But this would be doing a little bit less than than what has been recommended. And the final thing I will just say is, just to be perfectly clear, the building committee does not recommend this option, but it we did feel like it was our duty to provide it to you to show some ways that that we could achieve, some savings could be achieved, although, you know, these are things that do need to get done. David, Jeff, Ryan, Jackie, where did I mess that up? Anything else you would highlight there?
I think that was a good summary, James.
Okay, okay. All right, let's keep going. We're we're nearing the end. So just just to recap on the summer, on the project estimate, the building committee did vote eight zero to recommend the estimate, to that recommended estimate there of forty-six point three four six million. The project is focused on the highest priority items. We have made made that so. We can all thank Jackie Welsh for making that so. The project is going to start summer twenty twenty-five. I've heard some whisperings, oh, why can't this start this summer? Well, you know, that ship has sailed. We've been very clear. We've, we, I talked to the RTM ad nauseam about it. It's starting next summer. I would love, I would love to start it as soon as possible. But, you know, I also need to live in the real world. And 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 unfortunately, you know, I don't like having to bring, you know, bad news, but you know, that that delay of a year has added three million dollars of costs from escalation and inaction last year. So one thing I do want to report is that we have, we we talked about the significant work to contain costs. But I just want you guys to be aware, a year ago, I told this board that I was going to need about two point one million dollars, two point zero eight six million dollars to finish pre-construction. Right now, knock on wood, it looks like we're about, we're going to finish pre-construction process about seven hundred thousand dollars under budget. So we are all over the numbers. We are all over making sure we're saving money for the town. And we'll continue to run it that way. And, you know, we have a great little system with our owner's rep, Lawrence Rosati, who's on. And, you know, we're we're, and this building committee is all over, you know, look, we pay our vendors and and we pay them as on time as we can. But, you know, we're also just not not throwing money around. And finally, the the recap, those four items that explain the variance, playground, hygienist, LED lights, the little flat roofing section, we were able to balance three point eight million dollars of cost. We could not balance those out, and the building committee has zero appetite in recommending that those things get taken out of the project. We talked about ways it could be reduced. And we talked about the full scope list, so I'm not going to spend more time on that. Let's go here to timeline. Lawrence, would you like to at least introduce yourself and and walk through quickly the timeline?
Sure, James. Thank you. My name's Lawrence. I'm your owner's rep. I'm with the Morgana Group, working with the team since last February. The slide in front of you is our basically major milestone timeline. To the left of the vertical line is the work that's been completed to date. To the right, I'll just talk about the path forward. As Jeff mentioned, we are halfway through to the design phase of the project, the design development that was completed and and being discussed tonight. As James has mentioned, we're looking for the various town agencies to, you know, review and approve the budget and the plans and the ed specs so that we can go forward. In the near future, the team is working towards final site plan submission to P and Z. Downs and the principal and the building committee are having regular meetings with the phasing plan in preparation for, you know, going out to bid. Those meetings are happening weekly if, or bi-weekly to weekly. Going forward, we'll start the construction documents as well as the state funding, as James mentioned, to make the priority list by the June sixth submission. And then in twenty twenty-five, look to, you know, obtain approval and of the funding with the Bonding Commission, work with the Building Department to get the permit so that construction can start in the summer. So that's that's about the path forward, James. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lawrence. And the one thing I'm going to highlight while Lawrence has a little bit of the floor is Lawrence is also responsible for several of these, you know, good ideas on cost management. You know, and, you know, he came up with a a whole laundry list. His whole team went through and looked at every page of the design documents. And, you know, it, through his efforts, saved us at least a few hundred thousand dollars. So we're certainly thankful for that. Okay, this is the conclusion here. So obviously, this is an action item on your agenda, the ed spec modifications, your endorsement of construction funds. So you know, we are standing by to discuss this with the BET prior to their decision day on March twenty-seventh. We certainly, if that happens, we will certainly be talking to the RTM about it. We do intend to submit our final site plan April or May, still working on a a couple items. The phasing plan, we should be in a position where we have a draft in in by a month or two, and we are planning to have another forum. You may know we had a forum with the community about this topic in the fall. And we're all over the submission to the state by June thirty. And our objective, this on the design stuff, is to complete our construction documents this summer. So and the the final thing I'm going to leave you with is, without construction funds, this project will get delayed another year. That will lead to reopening the OCR approval. And it will lead to more incremental costs through escalation. And before I turn it over, Jeff, I would like you to share what you think, what you believe a twenty twenty-six start would add to the project in terms of cost.
Ryan, with two point two million?
Got it.
That's great.
And that would add another two million dollars to the project. There we go. All right. With that, Mike, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, James, and and thanks, everybody, for that. It's worth reiterating for, I know the board is well aware, but for folks at home, the the project has to be fully funded in order to meet the criteria for state approval. So it's not to say, that's not the kind of thing where we can allocate half now and half next year or things like that, which is why we allocated the full amount in our capital budget last fall. And now are coming back with the project estimates to 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 revise that number slightly. So the motion on the table is around the ed specs, the revisions to the ed specs that David talked about a little bit about why we wanted to, why we needed to revise those a little bit since they were last approved in June of twenty-three. So I'm happy for any questions or comments on that.
Mike, this is Karen. I have a question. It's a clarification piece, right? Because there are three columns and there are certain things within the ed specs that we could do as a fully fund, partial fund type of thing. There's the fifty-one million, the forty-six million, and the other one. What are the, what ed specs are you asking us to approve tonight? Based upon that, because I assume all of that's not in the ed specs if it's fifty-one million versus forty-six. So I just want some clarification.
The the recommended option is in the ed specs.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's the ed specs we brought down. Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the revisions to the ed specs? Ms. Costin?
So if we vote on the ed specs and approve them, we are de facto approving the lowest cost. Is that correct? Or is there a way to approve the ed specs and still entertain the other options?
Yeah, that's not correct, right?
Okay, I want to be sure I understand.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, James. You can clarify better.
Yeah, if the 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 lower, the you're approving the recommend, the recommended ed specs, right? Is the recommended option is baked into those ed specs? You're approving the recommend the recommended ed specs, right? Is the recommended option is baked into those specs. That number uh, has a value of forty six point three five four million, uh, three, four, sorry, thirty, forty six point three four six. Million, um, as we went through. Um, we are also saying, though, that if this board. Uh, had the desire to reduce uh, costs and and try and fund things in a different way. Outside of the project, um, you that would be a way you could do it, although the building committee is not recommending that.
Nor is the building committee recommending, uh, for clarity, the the higher number, which does include. Um, a lot of work around, you know, the entire, as you heard, the entire building that's beyond the scope of the ed specs. Karen, Hirsch?
Um, thanks. I I know I had um, had a few questions uh, earlier, but I I just um, wanted to double check. So including the new playground in this estimate means, I assume it's being uh, also partially reimbursed, right? You said? Correct?
Yes, or uh, yes, so the if if it's included in the project. Again, we have included five hundred thousand dollars for for the playground. You should know that uh, the Dundee Playground was recently replaced with a similar uh, you know, portable surface. At a cost in the last couple summers at a cost of four hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. So we have put. Uh, uh, and and heard from vendors that that cost is about five hundred thousand. So we put a placeholder for that. And we've put a placeholder of a five percent contingency for a total of five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. If you do the math, if you do the math on uh, our estimated reimbursement, again, we don't, we don't uh. Have a final reimbursement because the state won't talk to us uh, unless and until this is a fully funded project. Um, but if you, uh, I we we have, fortunately, we have some people who know what they're doing uh, in terms of state reimbursement. So they they believe it's about fifteen and a half percent. So if you do the math on fifteen and a half percent times uh, five hundred and twenty five. That's a a little north of eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, um, you know, it's it's also an equity issue to ensure that the students at uh, Old Greenwich have an access to a playground like every other school we have. Um, you know, I know in the past, and I assume in the past PTAs have helped donate towards uh, playground equipment. But I assume if they if we take outside funds for that, that also impacts our ability to get reimbursement? Yes.
My understanding is it does. Yes.
No, uh, but one other recommendation I might have, um, I know we don't have uh, any of our parks or wrecks or town department heads here, but. I know in the past also when playground equipment has been replaced in one location. Um, for certain reasons, sometimes it's offered the other equipment if it can be reused, which this can obviously. Has been offered back to the town uh, for installation in other areas. I mean, I'm just gonna make a. I mean, there's no playground, for instance, at Todd's point, maybe they would like to add one there. It's a benefit to the town as well. So. I mean, it it's a nice option to to consider that we would also be able to donate this from Old Greenwich to maybe another area of town that doesn't have a a playground. Um, just just a ten second thought, but um, thank you. Those were my, those are my big questions.
That's a, it's a great idea. Uh, Wendy?
Um, yeah, so I just had a couple of questions. The first one about the playground, if you could just walk me through. The changes, because I I feel like I have different numbers. It started. Hold on, at um. Seven hundred and seventy one thousand eight hundred and thirty two, then. I think in James's document that I read last night, and then it was four hundred and fifty, but now it's five hundred and twenty five. If you could just tell me. How those numbers changed over time and um, and to did, yeah, if you could just explain that, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think what you're referring to with the seven hundred was uh, a proposed alternate uh, that. Uh, was excluded from the schematic design estimate uh, outside of the project.
Okay.
And uh, so that was not included in that forty one point eight. It was below it. Um, and this board at that time, we were not recommending, we we didn't, we didn't really, we had, we were sort of under the impression. Well, the 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 current playground can sit around, can be there for a while. Um, and the Board of Ed's gonna be taking care of it in FY twenty seven, twenty eight, so we don't really need to push for that. But based on the more advanced level of diligence and design work. We know now that the phasing plan is gonna require shutting down that playground uh, on day one. And so we think it's important to raise the transparency that something does need to get done. So that that's 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 one thing why we're proposing including it. The other is that we have better information. So I think that information before uh, was from Ryan uh, and Downs. And was assuming that the project would be funded as a part of hard costs. And after a lot of extensive uh, conversations. Um, and hearing what others do in these type of situations and getting input from GPS admin and Blaze uh, wrote us a great. Uh, email and really did some digging and and Darren Wigglesworth and uh, Parks and Rec also weighed weighed in a lot. Um, you know, we said, you know what? We can pull this, let's pull this out. We can pull this into soft costs. We think our price is is gonna be. Uh, a better to do it that way. And uh, we think it's customary. And we had, you know, we had a pricing data that we got from uh, Dan Watson about the four hundred and fifty two thousand dollars on for Dundee. That was in the summer of twenty two and twenty three. Um, and we were hearing from our consultant uh, that, you know. A playground and surface is about five hundred thousand. So we said, all right, let's 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 pull it out of hard costs, put it into soft costs. Let's make it five hundred thousand. And let's, to be prudent, let's put a five percent contingency. So that's that's where five twenty five comes from.
Thank you for explaining. I have one more question um, about the hygienist. What what is the hygienist?
Yeah, good. It's it's not someone like you're going to the dentist.
I was wondering.
So, um, no, so it's, um, so uh, I think all of you uh, are tracking that. You know, look, there there is some um, abatement activity that is going to happen as part of this project. And um, we have uh, Downs and uh, Langen. Um, joined us for a forum uh, in the fall. Um, we've continued to do some extensive diligence and. Digging little holes in the building to try and suss out what's where and all this kind of stuff. Um, we're waiting on some final, some reports on the on those uh, some of that that will be. Ultimately included in our full design development package. But uh, the hygienist in this case is somebody who's gonna be on site. Uh, when there is any type of abatement activity, taking air samples constantly, submitting those over overnight, you know, by by a courier. For overnight testing. Um, we in our original uh, estimate, we had included about fifty thousand dollars. Our team had. Felt like that was a sort of an appropriate amount. And what we said is, as we were talking about soft costs this time is, we said, you know what? We need to increase that. It's it's too important. Um, let's let's bump that to two hundred. Um, because we really, we, you know, seriously want to have somebody on site twenty four seven. Um, and you know, might as well be prudent. We don't, you know, no one, there's. Everyone here, number the number one priority is is kid kid safety and and this is just showing our our commitment to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, seeing on uh, Karen, um, do we turn it back to you to call the question? Um, I see you go off mic, but I didn't hear you. It could be that she's.
She may have a child getting into the car.
It could be. I think it goes to you, Ms. Hirsch, then.
Um, well, I'm happy to call the question. Um. You know, uh, so I I'll reach out quickly to Karen to see if she's.
Yeah, I'm, can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay.
Perfect. Oh, sure. That's fine. Thank you. Um, so yeah, I'll call the question and I'll I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, this is Karen Kowalski. I vote yes. Uh, Karen Hirsch?
Uh, this is Karen Hirsch. I vote yes.
Okay, Kathleen Stowe?
Yes, Kathleen Stowe. Thanks.
Uh, Sophie Coven?
Yes, Sophie Coven.
Uh. Laura Costin?
Yes.
Uh, Wendy Walsh?
I'm abstaining.
Uh, Mike, uh, Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony.
Oh, well done. Mike votes yes.
Okay, uh, I mean, sorry, Cody Kittle.
I'm a yes.
Great, so that's um, seven one.
No, seven zero one.
Seven zero one. Thank you. Sorry, seven zero one. Great, um, Mike, do you have another motion?
I do. I would like to, uh, I would make, hold me bring up the the document here. Hold on. Do you do? Okay, um, so I think I, uh, Michael will help me if I don't think it's right. They, um, I, we all miss Christina. So I would like um, to amend the capital budget uh, on the old Greenwich line to reflect. A new uh, for twenty. Uh. Twenty four, twenty five to reflect um, the new cost of forty four million, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty five.
I second that. All right, are there any questions?
So to clarify, that is the recommended line. The um, if you're um, keeping track of the different um, columns here. So that's the that's the middle number that is the recommended line from the building committee.
Could we see that again on the screen possibly?
Yes.
Are that just an increase of one uh, one point five million and change?
That is correct.
It's it's, yeah, one sec, I'll share.
But it's, but there's a lot of losses and deltas that went into that.
You know, no, I just was saying the increase that you're recommending uh, for us to approve is one point five.
Yes.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it's a million and a half.
A million.
We budgeted in this.
One million, five hundred, three, three hundred, you know, thirty three thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars.
Right. I will, uh, but I will point out that doesn't really reflect. Change in the um, the the cost of the project. It reflects those other issues that we kind of found along the way, like the like the playground. Like the LED costs and things like that that have um, 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 increased um, some of the scope of the project. And the bathroom.
So if we want a new playground and the bathroom ADA issues addressed. Are we voting for the next column or the uh, I I want to be clear on what we're voting for?
Yeah, maybe we could go to the um, uh, Michael, I don't know if you can scroll down to the next page with the. Um, no, one, one, that one. Yeah. So this um, this is the document that, um, so the motion on the table is the green column. Um, and you'll see the green column uh, includes all of these things there that are um, checked off in green. It does not include anything below the line, which we said were the, um, all the different costs that were well beyond the scope of the project.
So can I just ask a more technical question?
Sure.
Um, so was there any recommendation for a roof replacement? That is there anything you saw that felt um, that it would be beneficial if not? I don't want to use the word emergent, but would it be beneficial to take care of those things? In the middle of a renovation versus having to schedule a roof replacement while there's, you know, um. It it just seems like a lot of work to do. Uh, again, you know, to come back on site and have to do that again. Um, in addition to like the millwork and and I I just. I want to be thorough in asking the question. Um. Just because any work is a disruption and has to be scheduled, you know, over a summer. And all those things so that kids don't have to be. Um, moved or or any of that. So I I want to just pose the question.
May I answer that one? It's Jackie Welsh on the building committee. I, um, the roof replacement is ongoing in all our schools and is very normal. So we've done intensive. Discussions with Dan Watson to look at what roofs were coming up for replacement. And uh, some of them were replaced. Fairly recently, and there are some that could be replaced and coming up in the twenty years span. But this is normal maintenance and we have picked the ones. That were included in the ed specs that really needed the uh, roof replacement now. And also the one where we're impacting the roof by putting equipment on it. So I I think the roof replacement really can wait as part of normal, ongoing. It doesn't disrupt the school year either.
That is helpful. Thank you.
And I would just, David Stein with Silver Petroselli, I'll just add one thing to this. Um, also just to maximize your reimbursement, the state. If you chose to do a roof replacement earlier in its lifespan. Then they will either derate or not provide you with full reimbursement. So we're mindful of the lifespan of that and currently. Those roofs that are remaining are still within the expected life, life expectancy.
Also helpful. Thank you very much.
Karen?
Just to clarify on that point, if we were to add those, that additional roof into. This current ed spec, that would impact our overall reimbursement rate. So right now, we're thinking it's somewhere around the fifteen percent. So adding in that 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 additional roof, despite, you know, maybe it's a few years out, that actually decreases the overall rate. It's not just. That the rate of reimbursement would cut out that part of the roof. It has an impact of the entire project reimbursement.
I'll I'll let one of our, I'll let one of our professionals answer that one.
I I'll I'll answer that. So it would be directly related to the roof portion. So. The um, the value assigned to that roof would would be either derated or considered entirely ineligible. It would not, it it does not go against the entire piece.
Okay.
It's germane to the roof itself.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Well.
Other questions?
Actually, sorry, I have one more if I can jump in. Um, the uh, on the hygienist piece, um. So to the extent we get information back in a twenty four hour time period on testing. And let's say it comes in at a high rate um, that. We would deem or someone would deem unacceptable for for children do, we would have to pivot quickly. What would be the protocol at that point with respect to the project?
So so all of this work, I'll take it again, David Stein, all of this work is going to be abated under contained, in a contained area. So um, what it would do is if we were at the end of the abatement piece and it was determined that there was an issue. We simply would not remove the containment and move on to the next phase. But another value of the hygienics or or essentially they are lead environmental, a licensed environmental professional. They will also be responsible to navigate the paperwork of the chain of custody. From removal outside the building to the correct dumpsters to the correct disposal site. So having that individual there. At each step of the process, not only protects and is validating the air quality. Um, validating that it has all been removed properly, but there are also documenting that it's been removed. In the proper channels offsite.
Thank you.
So I know this was just asked, but I just want to clarify, we just approved the ed specs and now we're just, all we're doing is approving the addition. The the additional cost for the things that we've already approved, which include. The playground, the changes to the bathroom, the lead lighting, the roof, et cetera. So. We've already approved that change in the ed specs. So now. So we've already approved that change in the ed specs. So now we're just ensuring we can pay for them so that we can get reimbursement from the state, correct? I'm just summarizing.
That's it. That's a good way of pointing it out.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a good way of pointing the obvious out.
Yeah, I I just figured, you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm ready for dinner, just saying.
I'm ready to go.
Any, are there, then I'll just say, are there any other questions? Okay, um, Mike, could you just rephrase the um the motion for me, please? And then I'm gonna call a question.
No, geez. Uh, Mike, are you talking to me or?
Yeah, you.
Okay, so I'll be calling the other Michael. Okay, so the motion is to um amend the line in the old, in the capital budget, the Old Greenwich Capital Budget, excuse me. The motion is to amend the capital budget for old, for the Old Greenwich renovation project um to reflect the new number of forty-four million, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five.
Okay, call a question.
I need a second.
Well, Karen already seconded. She was just asking.
I already seconded. I just needed, I know, I seconded. I just needed to rehear it in my mind, that's all. Um, I'm getting old, you know, I I had to have it rephrased one more time. Um, uh, so I'll, I'll call the question, um, and I will do a roll call vote. Karen Kowalski, I say yes. Uh, Karen Hirsch?
Yes.
Uh, Sophie Coven?
Yes.
Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony?
Yes.
Uh, Laura Costin?
Yes.
Uh, Kathleen Stowe?
Yeah.
Uh, Wendy Walsh?
Abstain.
And Cody Kittle?
Yes.
All right, I think that's everyone. So that's seven, zero, one. Got it right. All right, um, great. A- any other motions, Mike?
Nope, I'm all good.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 not, not, not yet. Just give me thirty seconds. Um, one, I just wanna thank everyone who joined tonight. The presentation was quite helpful. Um, and also to my fellow board members, I realize that we're on the, I think this is the second meeting in a row, and then there's a third meeting in a row. I appreciate all your time. I know we have other things to do. I have moved from a car to a house, et cetera, to a, from a parking lot. So I know others have done the same. And I just wanna extend my gratitude for getting this done. I've been on this project since twenty eighteen with feasibility study, and I'm uh, I've supported this project from the very beginning, and I'm glad that you all came together on another Thursday night to push it through. So I appreciate all of you and your time. Thank you. Now you can make your motion, Karen.
Oh, I was just, you can make, I was, I was making a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I second. All in favor, I don't think I need to make a roll call, just raise your hands. Yay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.
Thank you.